Idiot proofed. I love it. I know. Put it up here, it'll be like, you know, one of those. All right, so let's go ahead and get started. We've got a two for one sale for you tonight because we've got a public hearing and then we're going to go straight into a special meeting, right? So it's like a double header for you guys. It's gonna be so much fun. Strap in, it's gonna be a blast. So we're gonna go ahead and call to order the the public hearing on the Morse House at this time, please Debbie.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
And Mr. Kelly.
Here. All right, let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance if you would. Nick, would you lead us? So this is the moment when we have to give some instructions from the chairman and these instructions are simple. Anyone who wishes to speak during this public hearing, applicant staff or anyone in the public, we have to swear you in. So if you'd like to, I can go ahead and swear everybody in, or we can just do those who are going to speak on behalf and those who are going to speak against. So it's easier just to do everybody. So why don't we all just stand up and I'll swear everybody in. So if you feel so inclined to speak, you can go right ahead and do so. You could raise your right hand. The idiot proofed the the rules. So please repeat after me. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalty or perjury of law that you will tell the truth in these proceedings and just say, I do? All right, that's all we need to do. Now we can get started. Eddie, why don't you take it away from here?
Alright, so the case in front of you today is ZC 2024001. It's the Morse House Zone Map Amendment, which is a request to rezone the property located at Forty Oak Street, Pierce Township, Ohio, four five one oh two, from Amelia Suburban Business to Residential R1 submitted by Adam and Courtney Huber. The property is just over point four acres in area. It's currently zoned Amelia Suburban Business. It's proposed to be rezoned to R1. Its present use is vacant, so there's just a single vacant structure on site. And the applicant proposes to retrofit and remodel the structure into a single family dwelling. The sites to the northwest and east are all vacant. The site directly across the street is a credit union. So just a little bit of history on this at their March twenty six, twenty twenty four meeting, the Claremont County Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this case with one condition. That condition is that any future development of the site must comply with any and all regulations from Claremont County, Pierce Township, the State of Ohio, or other applicable agencies. At their May seventh meeting in public hearing, the zoning commission voted to recommend approval of the case as well with one condition and accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve. So this is just an external photo of the existing structure. So in rezoning and proposing to rezone the property to R1, they would, the applicant would then be permitted to do all uses in the R1 column of this use table. This would be considered as a down zoning. So the Amelia Suburban Business District is more intense. It allows more commercial uses. In this case, the applicant just wants to utilize the site as a residential dwelling. And so it's far less intense uses permitted in this in this district. Staff reviewed this application in accordance with three point oh six D. The following criteria shall be considered in decisions regarding zoning amendments. Number one is whether the amendment is in accordance with the land use plan, other adopted policies of the township, the zoning and the zoning resolution is adopted by the Board of Trustees. So section one of the land use plan is population and housing. This proposal and staff's opinion is in compliance with two goals. One is to promote development that will incorporate diverse styles and site designs. Number two is goal five, enhancing township branding. Land use section, land use design and economic development specifically goal two indicates improved design aesthetics and remove blight. So as you know, this structure has been vacant for some time. It's historic. It's over a hundred and fifty years in age. The applicant intends to maintain the historic features of this particular facility and bring it back to life effectively, which would also be promoting high quality building architecture. Public Services recommends reducing blight and maintaining a safe community, mitigating chipping paint, broken windows, deteriorating sites and roofing and disrepair. So anything, anytime those items can be fixed, rectified is a positive and in compliance with the land use plans vision. The natural resources, resources, environment and preservation section states preserve and enhance the historic character of the township. The Morse House was also specifically called out in this section as a structure worth preserving within the community. So this is the applicant's proposals in keeping with the spirit of that component as well. Number two is whether where one or more zoning classifications are available to implement the land use designation that the applicant must then justify the particular zoning being sought and show that it is best sued for the specific site based upon the policy of the township. The staff's position at the proposed classification is the least impactful designation available. The R1 classification permits the least number of additional uses aside from single family residential, which is analogous. It's critical to note that the site is adjacent to the proposed zoning district R1. So to the north and west, we already have an R1 zoning district in place. This site is almost completely surrounded by the R1 district as well. So it's really a one for one in that case. So this is just an aerial showing the future land use designations. The yellow, which surrounds the site in question is suburban residential. This home is, this structure is proposed to be turned into a suburban residential dwelling. So so staff's recommendation is based upon compliance with the township land use documents and are reviewing the impact and character of the surrounding neighborhood and R1 designation appears appropriate at this time. Staff recommends a board consider accepting the planning commission and zoning commission recommendations to approve the application with the following condition. Any future development of the site must comply with any and all regulations from Claremont County, Pierce Township, the State of Ohio, and any applicable agencies. Staff and the applicant are available if you have any questions.
All right. And the planning commission's recommendation, just to make sure we get that square in the record.
They.
To approve. They approved it.
Yep.
All right. So if we could, the applicant, if you want to come on up, we'll, we'll hear your presentation and then we'll open it to the board for any questions at that point. I gotta get you over here. Otherwise, people can't see you or hear you. And you'd really want everybody to see you.
I got you. We may have a thousand people viewing in here.
Yeah, tens of tens.
Yeah. So basically we plan on keeping all the historical aspects of Morse House intact. As far as making all the profiles for all the dirt. Remodeling all the preplanned lumber before it happens to this day. So we really want to take this back and preserve it to what it was when it was a real big building. It stood on beach possibly. It's a little too far off the beaten path for where it's at to keep it any kind of business that kind of survive. You know, it's kind of just a pastor. We actually plan on moving into this one. So basically we're get it reasoned at this point in time. So does anybody have any questions?
Fairly gentlemen.
I am familiar with some of your work and I think I'd like to draw us work on Facebook and elsewhere. And I think you've done a pretty good job and I hope that you'll do justice to this historic property.
I will.
We should, that's a lot.
Yeah. So we got a, we passed the final inspections today. So next week will be electrical and HVAC. So we're really rocking and rolling on this, you know, start putting it back together here in the next couple of weeks instead of tearing it apart. Anybody else?
That's all. I have no questions.
You guys have been, well, we've talked and I think that you, you're gonna do the right thing and sort of, I think you have a really a passion for rehabbing things and doing it in a quality way.
Absolutely.
But so it don't take, well, can't everything they're gonna be doing be done under the current zoning? So can they not have residential or am I?
Yeah, it's zoned business right now.
Right.
Those single family homes are not permitted in that district.
Gotcha.
I think that's because it was moved and plopped down into a business zoning area, not because it was intentionally planned to be used for anything other than really a government storage building.
Yeah.
Because that's what it turned into after a while.
But I thought, well, I don't want to digress too much, but I thought there was other business like areas where you could actually use them for residential purposes within the, within a business zoning.
You're, you're correct. Yeah. It's just that this district doesn't allow that, but there are, the Amelia Neighborhood Business District does allow some residential mixed in.
I was just trying to look out for you, man. You don't want to take a step back if you don't want to. So, but yeah, it sounds like we'll have to.
It's not that we want to, obviously you want the higher zoning on it, but like I said, it's so far off of Main Street unless they really did some amazing development back there in that field. You know, it's hard for us to put anything commercial in there that's gonna survive, you know, unless you're going to something with like a Airbnb stay or bed and breakfast.
I like what you are proposing person.
Thank you.
All right. Awesome. With that, let's also, because we've already done the discussion of the board, you can sit down if you'd like. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of the project other than the developer? Okay, seeing no one. Is there anyone who would like to speak against the project? Again, seeing no one, then I believe we can close the public comment, comment and go into deliberation with the board. I see no objections. So at this point.
Mr. Freeman, if you just want a motion and a second just to close the public hearing, that way the evidentiary component could be closed.
Okay.
Well, the motion.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Second, a motion and a second. Is there any, any further discussion about the matter? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, yes. Um, at this point, Eddie, what would you like us to do? We need to make a recommendation to put this on our, our agenda for the next board meeting.
Yep, you're exactly right. So if you want to deliberate and then make a motion for staff to propose or to prepare your resolution, I can do that. And if you have a specific recommendation, I can prepare that.
So are, so we have three different options, right? We can approve it, deny it, or modify it. So we'd entertain a motion to prepare a resolution for next board meeting to either approve, deny, or modify. What is your, what is your preference?
I recommend we approve it. For the, and make the motion to put that on the next meeting for the, as an agenda item.
So prove it as recommended by staff.
Yes.
I, I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So at this point, we could adjourn this meeting. We still have fifteen minutes till the next one. So is there anything you want to talk about just for fun? Nope. Can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please?
Still moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing. Imagine there's no discussion on that matter. So roll call please.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. All right. So now we've got fifteen minutes until our six o'clock regularly scare our special meeting.
It is six o'clock, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And says following the public hearing, but I kind of would like to let it sit until the exact witching hour, don't you think? Just to be safe.
As it was advertised, I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
They say sit.
Was it advertised at six or six thirty?
Six.
Okay.
But it was advertised following.
Immediately following this one.
Okay.
So. We can go right into it if you'd like.
Either way, it's fine.
Is it advertised at six?
It's going into.
Immediately following.
This meeting.
So there's no.
Not it.
Oh, well, I recommend we move forward.
To be sure, this meeting was advertised first from five thirty to six thirty, I believe. And then our, our regular meeting was advertised thereafter. I hate to be the turd that wants to stay here longer, but just trying to make sure.
I think so. The public hearing, we just put five thirty. We didn't put an end time on it.
Okay.
On the public hearing part, if that's any consolation.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
And we can hold up fifteen minutes to get to six if you'd like.
Whatever you want. I'm okay either way.
Because I believe the way that Katie suggested it is that we just say immediately following. So we just roll.
Yeah, let's roll with it.
Yeah.
Just trying to make sure. You never know with those things.
So we've deliberated, we're gonna go straight into the next meeting if that's okay. Let's let the crowd die down. Okay, so we're gonna roll right into it because our public, our announcement for the public hearing was at five thirty gave no end time. And our announcement for our, our public meeting or our special meeting was to immediately follow. So that means we can go ahead right now and get things started. Debbie, would you call our special meeting to order, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
And Mr. Campbell.
Here.
All right, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Pete, it's your turn.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. So the first motion is one from me. Chairman Freeman requests a motion to accept, to accept the resignation of Township Administrator Tim Williams per the resignation letter dated May sixth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Do we have any discussion about the matter? All right. Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So then we'll move into our next item of business. Carl, do you want to lead this one for us? All right, done. So our second item of business, because we're having a concert in the park, June the twenty second. There's been a lot of discussion about dealing with getting, you know, getting that project going. There's been a lot of meetings with safety folks and with internal folks. And we just wanted to make sure that everybody in the community had an opportunity to see what's been going on and what the plan is to deal with a whole host of things. So we have some guests in the audience tonight that are going to speak to the issue. Carl's been working on it. I know that the other parts of the administration as well as, as Chief Brockstrom and Chief Wright. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So the event overview is scheduled from six to nine P M. On Saturday, June twenty second, the band is Naked Karate Girls. And Leroy Alton is here from, is his production company who sponsors that band as well as one for the second concert in the park. They will also include a car meet for the East Side Cruisers. And there'll be food trucks and beverages for sale. So little bit of idea on the parking. The township did some advertising that I guess generated, kind of cast a pretty wide net that generated, I think, more potential interest on social media than than anticipated. You know, our goal was to generate, you know, five hundred people or so, you know, the Park Fest events that we had generated anywhere from five hundred, I think, biggest one maybe seven hundred people and without expense. So anyway, we did opt to kind of scale back on that, you know, kind of pause some of that, the public advertising that was going on and generating so much interest just to, essence of try and drive that down just a little bit to accommodate the, the size of the park and concerns in the community. So this is just a layout with the overall event with parking. So we'll use the field between the park and the cemetery as we have for, for all events, you know, parking across the street from the paved parking lot and then across in the grass and the other parking lots available at township facilities. If any overflow parking is needed, we've talked to the school and they give approval to use that space if needed. Go on to the next map. So we, in, in meeting with John Kohler and the other department heads, we're gonna have traffic come in through the cemetery and through the drive to access the parking area in the field there. And that's where the, the car meet will enter across that drive and will be on the back end of the field there. Food trucks will be aligned on the, to the just west of the walking path as we have for past events. We will have a, a tent set up just for partial information and ID checks. Each person will be required to have a, show their ID and get a wristband before they could purchase any beer. We already have the beer permit in hand from the state and it is, you know, beer only for ourselves. We will also have a separate booth for soda and water sales. And it's a detailing company that reached out to the township and asked to have a booth there, obviously with the car show. So they will be there. Lansar will have a booth there. They're also helping out with about twenty volunteers. They'll be handling the directing traffic. And, you know, as needed, if we need to, you know, move people down to the school, if needed to direct traffic, we will have those resources available. Also what they're providing is a first aid station tent. So we'll have that, that the event as well. And the, we've met with the department heads and gone through some of the, the items there. We are going to bring in additional portalets just because of the potential crowd. Obviously the three permanent restrooms won't be adequate. So we are, we're going to have portalets out there to handle the crowd size. Next slide. So chief, do you want to talk about your plans?
Sure. So in my former career, I was with the Cincinnati Police Department and one of those assignments I had there was the Central Business Section Commander. As such, we had many events down in the Central Business Section. One of which was in the summertime, we had weekly parties in the park by the riverfront. And during those party in the parks, we would have a couple thousand people attend each week. Various bands would play. And there was, there was always one to two uniform officers on site for those events. So kind of looking at that in regards to this concert, we know that this concert draws attendees typically between thirty and forty years old. So I've decided to, I will be in uniform that night and I will have three off duty Pierce Township Police, Police Officers with me, providing security at the concert. In addition, I have four on duty police officers working the road that night. That can be used if there's any other issues. And I also contacted Sheriff Leahy with the Claremont County Sheriff's Office. I advised him of the concert. He said he would probably be there as well off duty, but he, he will provide any assistance that we may need if there are any unforeseen, unforeseen circumstances. Next slide, please. So as Doug mentioned, Ohio Lansar will provide security at the crosswalks. A police officer will escort the money person affiliated with the concert. And we will temporarily hold the proceeds in the police department's property room until the next day. Next slide, please. After the concert is over, our on duty, or I'm sorry, our detailed police officers will provide any assistance with traffic issues as the concert is letting out. Naturally, in a, in a event like this, a couple, could be a couple thousand people. Anything could happen, but I feel from a security standpoint, we are well positioned to handle security at this event.
Chief, I know you've been tasked with providing your presentation here this evening and you did a good job and I understand that. These is Naked Karate Girls. I like, I had some neighbors that liked them and they were playing down at the casino. And we went and saw them and it was free. Anybody could have walked in. I mean, there was not that many people there. So I just hope this isn't an instance of over engineering, over anticipating, overspending of resources is sort of in a boogeyman. That's really not an issue, sort of a non-issue. That's kind of how I see it. I don't see this as attracting two thousand people. Probably. Come back to me if I'm wrong on that.
Well, but don't you want to plan ahead?
I would like to plan ahead, but I also would like to not spend a bunch of taxpayer dollars on our chief and tons of police officers and all this stuff because one of our residents raised a concern about this. I think that's over planning, over engineering, over government for nothing. Honestly, I think, I think it's just a little too much personally. I'm fine with the presentation. I'm okay with trying to plan for the worst and hoping for the best, but I think we're kind of planning for something here that's I don't think it's gonna be like a big problem.
I don't think it's gonna be a big problem because we're planning ahead.
Well, if I may, so, you know, I personally have not seen Naked Karate Girls. I heard they're very entertaining and it's actually aside from the, the name, it's lead one to believe is they, you know, they perform the family events and that type of thing. So you know, we reached out to Harrison who uses Naked Karate Girls quite often for concerts in the park. And they generally have said they, you know, they've had about four hundred people at their events. They're, they haven't during the week though. So they also performed last week at the Rock and the Roadling down at the banks. Pat Hogan, one of the park committee members went to that event and he said there may have been two hundred people there, two hundred, three hundred people. So, you know, I think we, we need to prepare. You know, it's based on the social media response at one time. It was, you know, eighteen hundred interested. Now we all know that interested certainly doesn't translate to what will actually show up, but you know, I think we do need to make sure that we are prepared to handle a, a crowd, you know. So.
And it sounds to me like you guys have had been doing that, you know, with prior events and I don't, I'm not aware of any problems or incidents, if as it were in the past. So I yeah, my perspective, I think you guys have done, you know, due diligence and your volunteer efforts are certainly to be commended. And so I, I don't know that we're overstating the issue. I don't know. I'm not familiar with this band.
Well, I think, but I think we, we need to be prepared. I think, you know, seeing that response was, I think, was more than what we would have probably anticipated for Pierce Township. Granted that, but I think it was, you know, the appropriate time to engage with the department heads at that point in time, especially when we had that. And when we had like last year, the concert in the park, we engaged with the department heads a few weeks in advance. And, you know, it was a, it was a smaller event. It was in the afternoon through, you know, a couple hundred people with another, you know, a good band, one that, you know, is very well followed in the community like Nick and Friday Girls. So, you know, so I mean, we, we make sure that they're engaged. They need to be a part of the that part of the event, the necessary part of it.
Right. So if we get to the beginning of the, the, this is a question for Chief Brockstrom. If we get to the beginning of the event and we see it's two hundred people and we've got too much, you know, the manpower is too, too high for what we're looking at. Can you peel that back and send them out on patrol or move, move assets someplace else?
Yeah, there's a contractual issue where we have to have a minimum of three hours for our off duty officers. Yeah, there's a contractual issue where we have to have a minimum of three hours for our off duty officers. But certainly if, say, we're busy on the road that night, we can certainly um uh switch them to road officers and get get our bang for the buck there.
So if we we discover that we don't get as many as we thought or maybe anticipated, we can we can flow them back out into the street.
I was okay with it. It's just that the the, you know, what we've approved as a board already, which was in the the plan for the year, which included this ban and then to come out back out with this dog and pony show about, you know, why we need more people and what's going on seems a little, you know, just another layer of sort of bureaucracy that's really inefficient.
Or you or you could say it's it's transparency to show what we're doing.
I understand.
And transparency is important as well.
We had one resident that was upset about this and we come in with this whole dog and pony show because of that. And I think that I think it is, you know, sort of a waste of resources and I don't want to certainly start spending more fire and police on this thing. Because one person didn't like this plan.
So Doug, it's my understanding, just to go back to my point, in the past, historically, you guys have cooperated with our agencies in order to facilitate peaceful events and the like. So so you guys have been all along doing that and did with this event, right? So I I'm I'm not sure I understand the problem either necessarily, but you guys have been doing all along what you you had been doing previously. So I I might be missing something here, but you know, maybe the social media reaction you got maybe prompted, maybe a little bit more concern and that that's fine. I'm I'm fine with that, you know, maybe that's what it is. You know, but my emphasis is on your cooperative, you know, behavior in the past has been just that cooperative, synergistic, et cetera. So I all I can do is I commend you for what you had been doing, have done on this occasion. And this will be a little bit of an experiment to see where this goes. You know, I uh again, don't know that we're going to draw the two thousand plus people, but you know, time shall tell, but I I I appreciate what you had and did do on this occasion to maintain that coordination and cooperation.
Me too. I appreciate you guys for all the parks committee. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
So. For volunteers, you guys are have done a great job. Year after year after.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Chief Wright.
Yeah, so I I think to the point a little bit with the the social media buzz that kind of started with it. Um, so with the potential of attendees, that does trigger some things on the fire code that are different than what has occurred in the past. Once you start getting over a thousand people, there's some different elements that have to be met and some other things you have to weigh in. So I think that was a little bit of the discussion and um so the chief officer will be there. Um, we have our on duty crew here. We're looking at it. We haven't decided to add staff yet. Summertime is difficult for us, a a time when we're already searching to find people. Um, Ohio Lansar stepping up to volunteer first aid, I think is huge regardless of of crowd. June potentially could be hot, it could be humid, it could just so the potential of people, you know, getting a cut, passing out just to not tax our resource, I think is a huge, huge help for us. Um, and then with any event, which a lot of you may or may not know, Cincinnati is fortunate. We have a fusion center. Uh, as part of Ohio Homeland Security, they monitor a lot of things with the social media buzz that starts starts showing up on radars places. So they'll monitor, you know, for any kind of threats, anything that would happen and they communicate that with us or with the police department. So unfortunately, the the world we live in today, we almost have to plan for the worst and hope for the best. You guys probably don't know this, but about an hour, hour and a half ago, there was an active shooter on the west side of the city in a grocery store. So unfortunately, it's just the the world we have to look look at. Uh, one of the components we talked with Doug is National Weather Service. So I can actually call the National Weather Service, have them put a pin on the radar for us for any event and have them monitor in case there's a chance of weather is going to pop up. You know, June's a little bit better, calmer, but how it's been the last few weeks, it's kind of hard telling. So that gives us the benefit. We have our UTV that we can have there. If we would need to move somebody with with the crowd. And then the biggest piece is just compliance with the fire code. So the concession trailers, regardless of of the event concession, mobile concessions have to be inspected now. There's distances, they have to be from each other, from structures, um those kind of things. We've talked with the Parks Committee if we would, for some reason, have this huge influx of people designated crowd crowd managers for hazards and things and compliance with the code. We've got that all squared away. Um, and then just kind of the site layout and and working through that, which Doug did a fantastic job with the map and um, all those pieces. Next slide, please. And then the last piece, we we do this routinely. This is an incident action plan that we actually have to file with the the county EMA director. Um, we require it of Saint Burdette's Festival. It's done for River Days. It's done for a lot of events, especially when there's a lar- larger crowd. Uh, kind of helps communicate with our mutual aid partners. Um, they put it on file at the comm center. So if something does happen, we have those elements in place already of what the next unit's in would be what channels working on, um, the maps of the event and things like that that Doug's already provided. Um, the information that we'll use to compile all that is information he's already given us with that input. Um, and then there's a communications list just so that we do have a storm that that pops up or something happens. We've got contact information for all of the important key players in the event. Next slide, please. And then after it's over, just helping as needed. We need to light up for service staff or the Parks Committee, you know, we've got that ability for some lighting on our vehicles. Just making sure there's no hazards with the the mobile concessions and that kind of kind of thing, just kind of being there as a presence. Excellent.
Yeah, the uh legendary run of golf courses uh that allows the golf park, because we have one uh, you know, on the event as needed for what we may need. And so the chief will, at the end of the event, will store it in the firehouse and return it to the golf course Sunday morning. Let's see, Service Department, um, John and Gordon have been in the planning meetings. So you know, one thing they're tasked with is uh just double checking the electrical components of the stanchions, make sure they're good working for the uh for the food trucks. Uh, they are going to, after the modest mode at uh the beginning of the week, that week, they're going to mark off uh parking spaces in the grass field and uh also include handicap parking spaces as well. Uh, they will have two staff members at the event that is helping with trash as volunteers will also be helping with that and cleaning restaurants if it's needed. And post concert, they are going to, um, I thought it might be easier just to bring the the dump truck over. Uh, just, you know, with the dumpster out here being a certain size, again, not uh knowing what the crowd size may be. Um, just take the trash in the dump truck and then take that to the pump gate on Monday. And um, so with that, we some other plans that we had in place that we've talked about is um we'll stop any, you know, beer sales at eight thirty PM. The event runs until nine, but we thought it'd be good to kind of have a stopping point, you know, for that. So um, uh, Leroy Ellington um asked him to be here, um, may ask him maybe just to make a few comments about the band, if you don't mind. And um, you know, they will also be providing the supervision for uh the setup and the audio components. Yes, the the event manager with them as well. Any questions before I turn that over to him?
Nope, we're good.
Yeah, thanks, Doug.
First, thank you guys for uh being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, thinking about it and uh secondarily giving your community an opportunity to uh have a day on be treated well. And uh you have a beautiful facility over there, a beautiful park. And it's going to, the naked karate girls are a first class act. They are very family oriented into the the event you talked about down at the casino. It was the Baltair Park.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that's been a couple of years ago, probably drew drew about eight hundred or a thousand people. A free event at the casino and it's uh on with a lot of promotion, a whole lot of money behind the promotion. Event planning on its best day is a guessing game. Social media itself is a platform that is uh, you know, I don't know what the exact science says about what two thousand likes equates to in real attendance, but in my experience, it's one to two percent based on what I see. I produce uh events all over the state of Ohio. Northern Kentucky, uh, the city of Mason, Ohio, I do a big concert there every year that sees about thirty thousand people. My clients include uh Union Township, Miami Township, City of Mason, City of Pickwa, Ohio, the City of Fairborn, Ohio. And on their best day, they'd love to know that two thousand likes equates to two thousand people. I just don't know that I can anybody can support. That that's actually what's going to happen. Doesn't mean it can't, because it can. But at the same time, the naked karate girls are a very family friendly uh organization. They'll do a good job for you. They are known for being a a big drawing uh band. So much so that there's three sets of the band. They're a costumed band. You wouldn't know the difference between this band on any given day because it's you don't know who the people are. They're sort of costumed. So that being said, uh, in in your position here as a representative of the government here, your the things that are important to you as a steward, a steward of the taxpayer dollar is you need to first be responsible about how you spent the money and then secondarily, you need to uh make sure that you're observing, taking every step you can to make sure that you're uh bearing in mind public safety and avoids liability. Those are the things that you care about the most. And uh you've already taken those precautions. Everything that you laid out is what we do all the time for festival events. You plan for the worst and you deal with the hand you get dealt. Because you don't know what's going to happen on any given day with with the weather. If it rains at one o'clock for a six o'clock concert, it could be the difference in people going out or not. Or this past weekend, we sold at the Taste of Cincinnati at one point. They closed the Taste of Cincinnati down for like three hours on a forecast. We had about a five minute rain. Event planning, it's not an exact science. I don't care what social media says or what it is. The other, the other piece of the puzzle that's important for you to consider, I just, I took about ten minutes and I'll I'll pass this out to you. And just did a quick Google search on what all is going on 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 that particular day around town. Make sure the Cincinnati Reds are holding. Three Dog Night is at Taff Theater. Janet Jackson is at the King and Sleep Pavilion. Boys and Men are at the Hard Rock Casino. FC Cincinnati is playing New England. St. Veronica Church Festival is happening. Perpway Park has the Whammies, which is a big drawing act, very much like the naked karate girls. The Ludlow Garage has Alvin Bishop. Brady Icon Center has a concert. The band Deviate is another big draw. They have a show. There's a free concert at Smell Park. There's three concerts at uh Count Square. That's twelve different competing events all on the same day. Uh, and arguably, Janet Jackson, I can't remember what time she even went on tour, much less right here in Cincinnati. So I think that there's a lot of competition for the entertainment dollar on that week. And I'm not saying that you're not going to get two thousand people at your event. I certainly don't have any way to to tell you that you're not or that you will. And also I think that you're very well prepared based on emergency preparedness from your uh fire and police department and your public services. You're well prepared. And to your point, and I I have to kind of agree with you. But again, if you're bearing in that mind, that mindset that, you know, uh you you got to avoid, you know, you got to bear in mind public safety and avoidance of liability. And you do have a res- uh a resident who's upset about it, about something. And that's their prerogative. You pay taxes like everybody else, agree or not. So uh I'm happy to answer any questions as it pertains to uh the band, the the event, anything that we can do to help put the community's mind at ease about how this event is going to be attended. I'll have staff on hand as well. Uh, my account manager here, uh, Drew Ladies will be here on day of the show, plus I'll have a production crew here. The band is, uh, while the name says naked karate girls, they're family oriented act. They're very professional. They can conduct themselves professionally. Uh, it's not a wild party. Well, it is kind of, it is kind of a party, to be honest with you. But it's not, it's not a wild uh drinking and throwing, throwing tantrum kind of a thing. So it's a lot of silliness and a lot of shit. It's so I'm here to answer any questions you have for me.
Fire away. I've I have no questions.
Neither do I. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Leroy, for coming out tonight. Okay, Doug, is that conclude? Okay. Yeah, the presentation. I I I will, but I think I'm just going to kind of move everything into um into public comment, if that's okay. We'll just merge two two pieces of the agenda. I mean, what I heard sounded like you guys have it, you know, buttoned down. So you're over prepared, perhaps you're I don't think you're going to be underprepared or caught flat footed. But with that, I'll open it to uh public comment. Unless you guys have anything else to say?
No.
Okay, public comment. Go right ahead. If you want to talk, you got to come up. That's the price of talking, my friend.
I'd like to know how we went from the original estimate of two thousand, banded around to two hundred. Um, and a previous concert was a couple of hundred, he said. So, I mean, to um to the point that was made, what are we really preparing for? Are we preparing for the two thousands? If we're preparing for the two thousand, where the hell are they going to park? Because you're looking at a minimum of six, seven hundred cars. There's no way those little places you were marking are going to cover six or seven hundred cars, particularly when you've got a car show before that. So assuming that's twenty or thirty cars, there's twenty or thirty cars down in the park. So, you know, what what are we really looking at, guys? We looking at possibly two hundred? Or because of all the other concerts, we're looking at um, you know, just the two hundred or two thousand.
So based based off his, what 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 this gentleman told us, and I know he's conservative and he wants to cover his ass a little bit too, because you don't want two thousand to show up and then he's he's hung out to dry, right?
Right.
You guys can go ahead and and campaign against me. I'm telling you, there is not going to be more than five hundred people at this event. And you you can go out and you can campaign against me. You could say Nick Kelly's a liar and he's full of shit and he doesn't know what he's talking about if I'm not right on that. I'm telling you, it's not going to be, if you have two thousand people with all the events that he says are planned that weekend and for us to come in here again with this dog and pony show and take up everybody's time just to discuss like where people are going to park if there's two thousand people. I mean, it's it's not going to happen.
Okay.
It's not going to happen.
That's
I I I'm telling you, it's not going to happen.
I I understand that. So, you know, we're preparing for something that they're now telling us is going to have two hundred.
Hey, 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 Mark. Mark, hey, buddy. Uh, enough, enough, Mark. Sit back in your seat. Sit in your seat now.
Okay, Mark.
Sit in your seat now, Mark. Not tonight and wrap it up. Wrap it up. What? Sit down and if you want to talk, you'll be recognized at the appropriate time, but you need to sit down now. Good, good. Good night, Mark.
Okay. So, you know, so we're talking about something much lower than the original number that was banned.
I'm I'm fairly confident.
Okay, well, that's cool. That's cool. I I'm cool with that. If it if it gets down to five hundred people, then um we ought to be able to park, because you're talking three hundred cars. And if the schools allows us to park over there, there's what, a hundred and fifty spots over there, plus what we've got ourselves.
Now, I don't know about the car show, but that's going to draw a few extra people, I guess.
So so here's the thing, Nick is going to be right. At the end of the day, we had about two thousand people who were interested. I think that Mr. Ellington knows his business fairly well. I I I understand the wiggle room. I won't call it covering his behind. But I do think he knows the business. I think that that number of fifteen hundred has been exaggerated. I think it's been used as a boogeyman to make people more upset. The truth of the matter is, is that when you do see, I I want to say that when we had, and don't hold me to this because it's just from my memory and my memory is sketchy because I'm getting older. But the point is that when we had, who who did we have? Dan Varner? When we had Dan Varner, we had probably three hundred people during the night, okay? Dan Varner. Dan Varner had, I think, on, and we didn't do any, any, uh, promotion of that. I think we had probably six hundred people, seven hundred people who said they were interested. But we had the event earlier in the day, so there were fewer people. It was a different kind of an event. I think what we're trying to do here is prepare so that if we do need more parking spaces, we know where we're going to park them. I think that the design that I saw looked like it's going to cover, well, I think we'll have a good crowd. I, the naked karate, karate girls, when we've looked at other communities, have given a pretty good, pretty good draw. And a pretty good project, or a pretty good, uh, product.
The difference here is Dan Varner is specifically known in this area.
Right.
Dan Varner's family's property is adjacent to the park. So he is very well-known right here. They're also a very saturated band. They play a lot of gigs in the past month, like three gigs a day. I've never seen five hundred people.
I think that answers your question. So in the interest of time, could I suggest we move? Thank you. I mean, I'm not the chairman, but may I respectfully request?
I think. No, you're done. Do we have anything else from the community? All right. Hearing no further discussion. Is there anything from this board?
No.
Hearing none, then can we move? Does anybody have anything else they want to discuss tonight? All right. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Motion is second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.